To the Republic, from all its friends, one nation, under God, in the vehicle with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Mr. Wilson, if we can get a roll call.
Yes. Daryl Jeter, District One.
Here.
Michelle Glover, District Two.
Here.
Eddie Skeen, District Three. Michael Ricky, District Four.
Here.
Danny Castile, District Five. Chris Manus, District Six.
Here.
And Stephanie Addington at large.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Awesome. Has everyone had a chance to look over the agenda? Are there any additions to the agenda? Or anything that we need to take off?
Mr. Chairman, I have one addition to add. The Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer to the agenda. I guess I would recommend that under Item 14, County Department Report. We want to do that first, I guess.
Do I have a motion to add the Treasurer and the Commissioner to 14C?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that. It's going to be the first one, right?
Well, we can do C. That works just fine.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
C works fine.
Okay.
Hold it steep.
Please. All right. Um, all right. Everybody vote by way of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Ken, do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda with the addition? I don't need to do? Thank you, Sally. All right, has everyone had a chance to look over the amendments for the last meeting? Are there any additions, subtractions, anything like that? Do I have a motion to approve those amendments?
I'll make that motion.
Michelle makes the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie seconds. All in favor vote by way of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we come to citizens' expression. Let me pull up the little thing I need to read. I'm sorry, it's been a month since I've been here. Or two months, really. Citizens' expression period is a point in the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the Board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and/or what organization that you represent. The Board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. We will have a timer up for everyone. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. Today, we have Ms. Peggy Tass and Ms. Bobby Powers have both signed up to speak in that order. We ask that you take turns to speak your business. Any action from these comments will be considered after we close citizens' expression. All right, Ms. Tass, if you'd like to come on?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Powers did come to me earlier.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay. Just wanted to, just wanted to make sure, because you did ask to be first.
I think, I think Ms. Tass called yesterday.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
But that's okay. I'm Peggy Tass from Snowflake Road. Good morning.
Good morning.
And I'm here on account of all dirt roads in Scott County. And there's 252 or 253 miles of dirt road. And VDOT has got a job of keeping up the maintenance on that, on that many miles of dirt road, to keep it passable for vehicles, for buses, mail, edicts, and us. And that's all dirt roads in Scott County, not only Snowflake Road. But I will say, Snowflake Road right now, it's just got some few really, really bad places, you know, due to the rain where it's washed it out, but VDOT, but they've got a lot to cover. And I'd still like to keep Mr. Kilgore in Pillion to help us get some more money allotted for dirt roads. And I think they're, they could, and if they had to drive them dirt roads, I think something would be done immediately. And I seen the paper for the Riverside property is getting some attention. And I want to thank the keeper, the guy that's keeping up the anti-dumpster area up there. He is, you never see nothing on the ground anymore. It is good. And Bill just told me that I believe they get to keep him. And I want to thank Scott County for letting us have the dumpsters to put our trash in. I mean, it's, it's just a big help. And I want to keep Snowflake Road on the six-year plan, both ends. And I want to thank you all for what all y'all do. And we won't be able to stay because we got other appointments. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Tass. Ms. Powers?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
First, I wanted to thank, I wanted to reach out and thank Sean Rizel from the Scott County Fire Department. I had encountered a tragedy last month due to my water being disconnected up above me in a line that the county was working on. And Sean offered to bring me water for my farm animals. So I want to give a shout out to him, and I appreciate that very much. I want to recognize his integrity. I would like for the Board to identify the Virginia statutes or constitutional provisions that expressly authorize the county or the school board to tax local residents for schooling costs of non-residents, Tennessee kids. Under Dillon's rule, any authority to do so must be expressly or necessarily implied. Without that, the levy may be ultra vires, in other words, beyond one's legal powers or authority. Respectfully, 2213 authorizes education of resident children. And 2215.1 only allows resident, non-resident admission if contracts exist to share cost. Unless you can sign a statute expressly authorizing the county to levy local property taxes for the benefit of Tennessee residents, the tax is beyond the scope and under Dillon's rule. Please produce the exact statutory citation, not just a generalized reference. Has the county entered into any formal inter-local or interstate agreement with Tennessee school districts or the state of Tennessee to allow cross-border schooling cost sharing? If yes, please provide a copy. If no, on what legal basis are you obligating local taxpayers to pay for out-of-state children? If no written contract with Tennessee or its local district exists, then the Board is admitting non-residents without any lawful cost sharing. That would mean local citizens alone are subsidizing Tennessee children. Please confirm in writing whether such a contract exists. Does the county attorney or outside counsel have a written legal opinion that evaluates whether the Board's practice is consistent with Virginia case law regarding Dillon's rules, local taxation limits? If so, will you release it to the public? If not, why has one not been prepared before imposing these charges? If the attorney has reviewed this, then a written opinion should exist. Citizens have a right to know the legal justification for cross-border taxation. If you refuse to release it, that signals either it does not exist or the weak reasoning is weak. Transparency demands publication. If a future court determines that taxing local citizens for out-of-state students costs was unlawful or unauthorized, what is your plan for refunds, waivers, or relief for those citizens who already paid? Will you suspend further collection until legal certainty is obtained? You are exposing the county to potential retroactive liability. Courts have required restitution in cases of unlawful levies. A prudent Board would at least acknowledge the risk rather than dismiss it. What is the financial impact on existing taxpayers at this cross-border subsidy? Show us in cost-benefit breakdown how much extra burden falls upon current residents versus the benefit, if any, gained by out-of-state students. Please publish line item figures, total non-resident students, actual per pupil cost, tuition, or reimbursement collected, net subsidy. If, with respect to the Riverside development, who owns the property? Is it a private owner or is it the county's property? What performance, bonds, escrow accounts, or clawback provisions have you required from the developer to ensure that costs, overruns, infrastructure maintenance, or failed growth do not shift the burden onto local taxpayers? Can I please have an answer to these questions next meeting? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Powers. Anyone else for public expression?
Morning.
Morning.
Thank you this morning for allowing us to come before you.
Can we get you in?
My name is James McDavid. This is Doug Jones. Doug Jones. Both of us live on Horton Summit Road, Route 654. I live on the District Six side. Doug lives on the District Five side. I have before me a couple of emails that I'd like to present to the Board concerning improvements on this road. This first email was sent to Mr. Sumter. Said, "We were told in 2022 that the road was fully funded for 2023." There was tree marks, tree marking for preparation for removal. Since then, the markings have faded. Some of the trees, you don't know whether they've been marked or not. When the six-year plan was presented to the Scott County Board of Supervisors in May 2018, Horton Summit Road was originally lined up to begin receiving its upgrade IFRS Furlong Hauler, which had been completed months ago now. Like to know if this road is still fully funded. It appears that we're getting mixed information. We were, information brought to us that the funding was pulled, but then, I believe in another...
I was told yesterday it was canceled. The fund was canceled.
By who?
That's what we're here for.
Well, I mean, who told you that? I'm sorry.
A neighbor.
A neighbor, okay.
A neighbor also, during his having to stay at home because of COVID, he was listening to the Board over the TV. And I think maybe the statement was made that Horton Summit Road was scheduled for tree removal. You can verify that or not. I mean, that's what he heard on the, on that. Then this latter email, also in response to the previous email that I read to you, said, "Route 654, Horton Summit is still on the secondary six-year plan, and we will begin some construction in the spring of 2025. Inflationary factors affect several projects in the last two years, and this caused some projects to be slightly delayed. VDOT fiscal year is from July 1 to July 30." And the work was obtained, this work, and the project was began, became fully funded July 1, 2024. This week, this email was, was sent November the 12th, 2024. And he said, "Since this has been fully funded, it opens up the opportunity for necessary environmental agency clearance and perform engineering work and preparation for construction." This is underway for Horton Summit, and it is very, it is the very next project to be constructed as part of our rural rustic program. We typically do not do little construction during the winter months as stated. We do plan to get the project started in the spring. That was this spring. And it should be completed during the summer months of next year. I apologize for the delay, but I do not foresee any future issue in getting the road built.
So we want to know why has this been delayed?
We will reach out to Mr. Sumter and see. The last time that he was here, I believe that was in August, wasn't it? Yeah. He said? Or was it September?
I don't think he was here.
Yeah. I missed that one, sorry.
They marked the trees probably in, in '23. There's so many trees that was marked to be cut, that the old markings has faded out now, you can't even see them, that's been so long. I mean, we're just, we're concerned why this has been delayed so much.
I know. And I have received everyone's emails, and there's a number of people that are concerned with that, and I've tried to get...
Are you aware that this has maybe been, the fund has been canceled?
They have not told us that the funding has been canceled, and I don't believe they can cancel the funding without a Board vote.
Well, who, who has the authority to cancel this?
I think it would only be the Board, am I correct?
Would the Board be the one to have the authority?
The only reason it would be not under construction is if the state did not allocate funds that year. They would kick it back a year, but I think Horton Summit's on the schedule.
Horton Summit is the next on the schedule.
According to this information, it is. It shouldn't have been done this spring.
Can I get your phone numbers? I'll be glad to follow up on that. I work closely with VDOT.
Mine is 276-431-4147.
The cameras on, you're giving your phone number to everybody.
You are?
You're giving your phone number to the TV cameras. I've got it, so I'll, I'll contact you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I will tell you that Mr. Sumter watches all the videos of the Board of Supervisors meetings, so he's watching right now. So he's listening to you. So hopefully he can get with Eddie and talk to him, and then Eddie can get back with you guys.
Now, I believe I've asked multiple times about Horton Summit Road to Mr. Sumter, and he has assured me that it is still on the plan and still going to be constructed. But I, I understand why y'all are here, because it seems like they've delayed way too long, and there needs to be some sort of explanation for it.
This could have been delayed because of Halene hit, and VDOT have a lot of cleaning up to do.
Yeah, it could be.
That could have caused part of this.
So in our...
I wish they'd just be honest with us and tell us, you know, why, and if it is still on there, because we haven't had no act, Board action to remove funding or anything like that.
So Mr. Skeen, you'd reported in our, in our August meeting that it was still on there, so I don't know. You said, I mean, it specifically says that Horton Summit Road work will begin after vegetation restrictions go away, was what. So I don't know if you have any more?
So I'll, I don't have anything to do on that, but I will have something for you. I'll follow up this week.
That was from others.
Thank you, fellas. Sorry we didn't have a better answer for you. But I can tell you, the Board has not messed with the funding for that road. And as a general rule, we do not mess with it.
I thought my concern was, if y'all cancel the funds...
No.
Oh, no.
I want to know who voted for it and who didn't.
I understand, I understand.
Okay.
Sorry we didn't have a better answer for you, but I can tell you that we...
Can you have another answer for the next reading?
We, yeah.
I would imagine.
Yeah, we should have.
I should have something for you this week.
Yeah.
I'll contact you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
You got anything else?
Have just one quick item. On Natural Tunnel Parkway. After you turn off of US 23, going up Natural Tunnel Parkway, right behind the Mac Bones Restaurant, where the big trucks come in and out, fuel, diesel fueling and all, there is some severe road damage there that if you stay on your side, you're out to knock your vehicle out of line because of the potholes that are there, and they've been there for months. That needs to be addressed, because it's an issue that shouldn't exist. Surely, surely I believe that VDOT knows about this, but for some reason, it's not being addressed.
Once I get back with you on this other issue, I'll tell you how to do the work order process on how to report problems. And that speaks every, that puts everything in place, it's documented, and if we're getting a good result with that, I'll go over that with you when I talk to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, fellas.
Anyone else for public expression?
Gary Baker from Boosie Creek. Good seat back, Chris. Hope you're feeling a lot better.
Yes, sir, much better.
I just wanted to recommend, thank VDOT for taking care of Boers Chapel Road. They sent a road grader up there, and he cleaned out the side ditches here. And all the tiles, and we had a decoration up there a couple weeks ago on Sunday for the big cemetery up there. I guess that was 300 or 400 cars goes up and down through there, and I'm so glad they got that done. Thank you, Eddie, appreciate it. And one of the blessings, that's 91-year-old that lives on Rover Cleveland Road next to Weber City School, she's complained about this road forever, but she called me yesterday and said, "Are you going?" And I said, "Well, yeah, I might just go down there." And I gave it to her a while. And, and anyway, she wants that road looked at, Eddie, and see what they can do for it. It's, it is in bad shape.
I've looked at it a dozen times.
I know.
I've had them up there four or five times to look at it.
But see if you can get on them a little bit, somebody, and see what you can do so she worries about her property and stuff, or, you know, you don't have, well, everybody. But try to get, whenever you can, see the two ladies that's running for governor to see if they could possibly get VDOT's money reinstated like it was back in the old days, 2009. I think they jerked about two, back in them days, the funds were small, but I think they jerked about 2.2 billion away from VDOT back in them days. That's why they had to close down so much stuff. You all know how contractors are, and, but VDOT has a hard time with their contractors. And anyway, try to help them out if you can, and if you see them, talk to them. It ain't going to hurt them to talk to one of us, that's who the votes are on, put them in there. And there was something else, Chris, but I can't think of it right now. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public expression?
I'm Gary Madyall, I live out in the Stanley Town, right over here. Mr. Manus, I really want to thank the Board. Understand, I'm not here complaining. My daughter, she applied for the county administrator job, and the problem I got is, I'm really glad she didn't get the job, understand that. But the problem I got with is that you guys didn't even give her an interview. Didn't even give her an interview. She's got a master's degree in business, she's got specialized in accounting, and you guys decided to throw the vote to Mr. Dingus over here. What makes him so uniquely qualified? What's his education? I expect an answer, I'll give it to you. He went to Lincoln Memorial University for wildlife, fish, and wetland science and management. So why, what makes him qualified? Well, I said, he's literally qualified to run a trash truck. Mr. Wilson, you're the new county administrator.
Yes, sir.
Are you overwhelmed or incompetent that you need a assistant? Or are we just giving money to our friends?
I will say, I'll answer, Mr. Dingus is an asset to the community, asset to the county, and his service through the years is greatly appreciated, I believe, by the whole Board, and certainly he's appreciated with me in my time here.
So you can't ask, well, you actually need the help?
I think that what he does as Public Works Director and Assistant County Administrator is needed.
Well, all I got to say is, you know, I don't get home pretty often. I only get home maybe three times out of the year. But I do watch the meetings on YouTube. And I always hear about raising taxes, raising taxes, raising taxes. Why don't we reverse that? Why don't we look at ways of cutting expenses? I mean, what we got in this county? You don't have no jobs, you don't have any good places to go eat, you don't have any malls. If you want a new car, you got to go someplace else to buy it. What you got to offer in this county for the taxes you're charging? That's all I got, guys. Have a good day.
Thank you. Anyone else for public expression? Going once, going twice? We'll close citizens' expression. Is there any actions or comments coming out of that?
I do have a couple of comments. Ms. Powers just spoke on, well, several issues quite extensively, and I don't expect the Board to have a comment today. I think the next meeting would be appropriate, that's, I think that's what she's asked for. But you might need to get her to submit her list, because it's pretty detailed. If, if that's okay.
Do you have a contact number for her?
I don't. I'm sure we can get it. And she had a couple of days for PDA, and I think Mr. Kilgore's going to be here later. Maybe he can address a couple of those items at that time. That's all I have.
All right, anybody else? Any other actions that we need to take besides asking Mr. Horton about, ours, not Mr. Horton, Mr. Adam, Mr. Sumter about Horton Summit Road?
That will be addressing that with him.
All right.
I'll keep you posted on it.
Okay. All right, moving on. Number seven, public hearings. Public hearing on possible adoption of an ordinance to amend and reenact in its entirety the Scott County Public Procurement Ordinance to reflect the law as it now reads in Title 2.2, Chapters 43 and 43.1 of the Code of Virginia. I have to have a public comment for this, correct? Is there anyone here for public comment for this subsection? Or this, this adoption ordinance? All right, we'll close public expression on that then. Are there any comments from the supervisors or questions? There's a few things changed in there. No comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Stephanie, motions, and Michelle, seconds. Everybody vote by way of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. We will move on to number eight, unfinished business. Mr. Austin Sachs with Davenport. If you would like to come on up.
Good morning, Chair, members of the Board. We'll be brief here. If you do recall, just as an introduction, Austin Sachs with Davenport, we are the county's financial advisor. If y'all recall, I was here about a month ago presenting the direct bank loan RFP results for, to secure financing for a series of school capital projects. It was our recommendation, recommendation to move forward with Capital One, given their favorable interest rate that was fixed for the 20-year term, as well as flexible prepayment provisions. And so y'all made a motion to move forward, and we've been going forward with that process. And we're here today for the formal approval of the financing from this Board, and that's via a resolution that should be in your agenda packet. Just for your information, what that resolution is really doing, it's giving approval to move forward, and it's setting out the parameters for the loan, which means a max borrowing amount, a max interest rate, a max term of the loan. And it's also giving authority to the appropriate elected officials and county representatives to execute and sign a loan draft document, or the final documents, once those are finalized. The resolution also has a series of attachments, which are the drafts of those financing documents prepared by your bond counsel. And so that approval will be the last action necessary for this Board. We'll also have a couple more actions by the EDA and the school board for this financing, and we're looking to close by the end of the month, which is when funds will be available. And so with that, happy to answer any questions regarding the resolution. It's prepared by your bond counsel, Sands Anderson, but can definitely do my best to address any questions, can definitely answer any questions on the financing. But otherwise, appreciate the opportunity to speak. But otherwise, appreciate the opportunity to speak. Any questions for any of the board members?
I will say, Mr. Chairman, we will need a roll call vote.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Do we want to take a roll call vote on a resolution of the board supervisors for Capital One public funding? That is in your packet. Have y'all had a chance to read over that, understand?
Motion, second.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Stephanie. Michelle, seconds. All right, roll call vote, please.
Starting.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
It's all right.
Darrell Jeter, District One.
Yes.
Michelle Glover, District Two.
Yes.
Eddie Skeen, District Three.
No.
Michael Brickie, District Four.
Yes.
Danny Castile, District Five.
No.
Chris Manis, District Six.
Yes.
Stephanie Addington at large.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, let's pass.
All right, pass five-two. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a comment in regards to this.
Why didn't you make it before the vote?
Well, I'm sorry. You don't want me to speak?
No, I do, I'll let you speak, but...
I didn't want to talk. I was provided with some data recently, within the last month, on the student enrollment. And the total student enrollment went up eighty-six in Scott County, and that included thirty-two Tennessee students. So Tennessee now represents thirteen point eight-six percent of the total enrollment in Scott County. The two schools that he presented, Weber City's thirty-two percent Tennessee and UMA is thirty-five percent, those both had grown.
I'm sorry, what percentage was that of total Tennessee students?
Thirteen point eight-six, county-wide.
And how did you arrive at that number?
There was a total of thirty-two-hundred-and-sixty-eight students, four fifty-three Tennessee.
I mean, how did you count the Tennessee students?
I can't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. How?
Mr. Ferguson provided that information.
Oh, Mr. Ferguson provided that. So he's the one who did it?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we knew where the numbers were coming from.
That's a good question.
That's all I have. All right. All right, thank you. And moving on to new business, memorandum of understanding relocation of Virginia Cooperative Extension Office.
Yes, I think everybody has that MOU in your packet as well, if you had a chance to review it. We've been working with Extension and Soil and Water to try to get Extension moved up to that space that's up there with them. We think that that would be a good move to have them under the same roof. I know Mr. Jeter was helping with that as well, and we appreciate that. And we've, Soil and Water has voted on this and approved it to lease the space to us for no monetary rent, just maintenance upkeep. So I think, you know, as far as an ongoing cost, you know, we were already paying utilities and stuff at the current Extension Office. So it wouldn't really, you know, hopefully it wouldn't cost us all that much more and it would be a more conducive work environment, I think, for both agencies, so. So we would just need a motion to approve this MOU. If anybody, let's see if I have questions.
That's safe and accountable, end of the day. I'm all about that. I'm sorry, do I have a motion to approve this MOU?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Michelle, motions, Darrell, seconds. Everybody vote by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bookkeeping items, Ms. Vickers.
Please appropriate one thousand one hundred and two dollars and fifty cents to Sheriff's Department Payroll Other, one thousand dash three one two zero zero dash four zero one one zero eight and eighty-four dollars and thirty-five cents to FICA, four zero two one zero zero, for reimbursement received in positive treasures office.
Do I have a motion to make those transactions?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Darrell makes the motion, Michelle, seconds. All vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, appointments.
You have one appointment to the Heart of Appalachia. The tourism director has made two recommendations for you to consider, Josh Wilson and Eddie Skeen.
Okay. All right, Josh Wilson, our county administrator, and Mr. Skeen.
I'll nominate Josh Wilson for this position.
Okay.
I'll nominate Eddie Skeen.
Okay. Do I have a, I guess I need a...
Vote by hands.
Vote by hands for each? Okay.
Josh.
All right, all those in, do we want to have any discussion beforehand?
Well, what's the effective date?
I believe their next meeting is in December. They meet quarterly. But as far as effective date, I believe as soon as we, the board would vote on November, I could get that sent over to them. Because right now, we, so the way this works is the county is to have two representatives on that board. One is an automatic, it's our tourism director, Brittany Robertson is serving on the board, it's a voting member. And then the way she is to make a recommendation on the second member, voting member of that, which then comes in front of the board, which is what we're doing. The one, the lady that was serving on the board has taken a position with the Heart of Appalachia, and so therefore she cannot serve on the board in a voting capacity anymore.
Sorry, Josh, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the lady that was serving, Jennifer Pike?
Yes, correct. Has taken a position with Heart Appalachia, and therefore she could remain on the board, it's my understanding, as a non-voting member, but we have a position, a voting member seat to fill, so that's how this is opened up.
Okay. And she lost her ability to vote because she took a contract with them?
Yes, I believe as a lobbyist.
And that's part of their bylaws that she cannot...
Correct. She, I believe she will remain on the board as a non-voting member. That's per their bylaws, the board of the Heart Appalachia can't point her to that, so, you know, we wouldn't have anything to do with that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, okay. That's just odd, because I remember us making the appointment for her, anyways. I believe you had something to say.
Mr. Wilson, are she, are you sure she's still on that board, I mean, in Richmond? That, what I'm trying to say, well, where'd you say she is working at now and she couldn't vote at?
I believe she's working in a lobbying capacity with Heart Appalachia.
Okay, I didn't know if she's still working or she quit or whatever, but I've heard that she wasn't working for them now. I don't know if that's true or false.
As of, was that last week or the week before, we all run together, she is still on the Heart Appalachia Board as a non-voting member, yes.
Yeah, but we lose part of our pool by not having two voting members.
Right. As of, as we sit right now, we have one voting member representing Scott County on that board.
Okay.
Well, like views on that board, would that be a conflict of interest where your county supervisors here in the county, I mean, county administrator?
No, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a conflict, no.
And I don't think there's a conflict where adding, almost the...
Either one, or either one.
Yeah, Airbnb and has the, aren't you the president of the Airbnb Association or something? Or you got that started though?
I have organized.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't want to...
That's fine.
I'm trying to give you more responsibility.
We don't have a formal organization, but we got to get, trying to develop some, something down the road.
All right. Sorry, I didn't mean to...
Oh, that's okay.
I'm giving Eddie new jobs over here. Okay, all right. Do either of you want to make the case for membership or just...
Okay. I've been previously on the tourism committee several years. The bounty trail, I'm a member of that, I've attended several of the events, I've met a few. Do have Airbnb locations to help organize informally the lodging group. I've been involved with horse park, with working with the EDA and developing that extra property there. In several years that I've been doing this, it's not something just happened.
I think everybody is pretty well aware that you've been big into tourism, so that's good. Have you, have you served on any type of, like, regional board for tourism, or would this be your first foray into that?
This, I think this will be the first. I was on the tourism committee here.
Yeah, just briefly, you know, when this came to my attention that we were down a voting member, you know, I've talked to several, several people and just, and talked with Brittany, and I think this is a good opportunity for us to really capitalize on the tourism for Scott County, working together, working on this board, and not necessarily just the Heart Appalachia Board, but to connect some of the other organizations that we're a part of and we see and work with on a day-to-day basis. You know, just kind of growing our network of people that we interact with. I know, you know, there's definitely invaluable resources that we can bring to the county by a lot of the different boards and conferences and conversations that we have just throughout the weeks and the months. This is Brittany and myself both, that we can bring both Heart Appalachia and then ultimately back to Scott County to benefit us. You know, as, as we all know, Scott County has a rich resource of tourism and opportunities to grow other areas of our county through tourism, and it's something that's very exciting. I know either way, I'm excited to work on.
Mr. Chairman, I can add one thing.
Yes, sir.
I have advocated for tourism budgeting for the last two years, but this board has taken a different direction, and that is cutting the budgets of the Heart of Appalachia, Spiritate Trails, part-time tourism director. So I have been one that has been out front in trying to promote tourism. All the counties around us are doing the same, but Scott County is not. That's not to say that you wouldn't, but as a board, I think it is downplaying tourism, and I've tried to play it up in my advocating for increased budget. That's all I have.
Are you saying Brittany's not doing a good job?
No, she's excellent.
Okay.
Real set of, I think she needs to be full-time, is what I'm saying.
I, I was going to say, because I've seen more, more of Scott County online than I have any other time online, but that's great, I think I've seen it more than Wise County at this point, which, you know, wasn't the case a few years ago. But that might just be because, because I've noticed it.
Excellent.
Yeah, okay.
I agree with you, that's important. Chris, I'd like to say that since she's tackled, you see a lot more things going on everywhere. The things that she's put on TV, the businesses we've got, I could say the redstone has really picked up since that. Terrorism, I go to natural tunnel a lot, and I will say, one out of every four cars is out of state. Georgia, Alabama, not, not just Tennessee cars, but that's, I would not believe it till I started checking and seeing it. But terrorism seemed like last year, we cut the budget on that. Can you remember Eddie, how much they cut him?
No, we...
I can't remember the number. We, we did, yeah, the board did. And tourism, it, go up there at Devil's Bathtub, you can't find a place to park, they're parked in the road and everything. And I mean, there's another thing that we've got in the county, we're very fortunate to have natural tunnels and Devil's Bathtub and even Hightower area.
Carterfold?
Carterfold, yes. But I think that's something that we're lucky to have the two rivers in the same county too. And I mean, terrorism seems like one of the better things we've got in this county that a lot of counties don't have.
She's making it work.
And it's, I'd like to, everybody, I remember years ago when the horse park come about, about everybody on the board, I won't say all, but I'll say one, she said over her dead body that they never put a horse park in that field. Well, it's there, that's all I'm saying, it's probably the best thing besides the plank that was in Dan Dan. I'd say that's the second best thing Dan Dan has ever had.
There's always a crowd there when they're having an event.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
I always see the horse trainers.
Yeah, I think in trail, I was in the background.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor the discussion, I just wanted to make sure that we understood the advantages to either one. You know, Mr. Skeen has been working in tourism, revising on that, and, you know, owns several Airbnbs that he uses for tourism, so he, you know, would be a decent choice. I think Josh also would be a decent choice, this would allow him to grow his network, and it might actually allow us to short, shorten the path from Heart of Appalachia to the county. I think that might be interesting. You know, on the other hand, I think, I think Eddie would be fully dedicated to it, and he would be able to dig in and really come away with some good stuff. So there is advantages to both, I don't want either of you to feel like, like you didn't get fair representation here. I wanted to make sure we paused and took time to do that. So we have a nomination for Eddie. All in favor?
She was hands for Josh, he was the first one nominated, and then for Eddie.
All right, show of hands for Josh then. All right, four for Josh. And show of hands for Eddie. All right, three for Eddie. Looks like Josh again. Oh, well, I guess Eddie, you should have abstained from that one.
No, he doesn't have to.
He doesn't have to?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was, I'm trying, I'm trying to make sure we do everything by the book, because I'm sure I'll hear about it if we don't. Yeah, Sally will have my hat. But anyway, all right, so that'll do, we'll appoint Mr. Wilson as the representative of the Heart of Appalachia. Mr. Wilson, we'll expect big things from you.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, next item is the county attorney's report.
I don't have anything today, if you all have my report in your packets, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for getting us up to date on the procurement, public procurement ordinance. There was a lot of things that were missing that seemed like, there was a lot of red.
Well, it's just updates from this year's General Assembly, and none of them will affect us very much, but we're like, we're at least in compliance.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you for always making sure we're in compliance.
All right, Mr. Wilson, county administrator's report. Alright, Mr. Wilson, county administrator's report. Let's go with him.
Yes, if everybody, uh, hopefully you had a chance to look at your green sheets there and print it out in your packet. Uh, we have a, uh, general fund balance of seven million, nine hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred eleven dollars and one cent. See how that compares previous years. Uh, we had an early set claim for the month of eight hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred, or eight fifty-five, one ninety-two, twenty-seven, and total claims for the month of one million, sixty-eight thousand, five hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. Mr. Chairman, I just need a motion to pay the bills.
Alright, do I have a motion that, uh, we should pay the bills?
I'll make the motion.
Alright, uh, Michelle makes the motion. I think Jeter beat you to it. Uh, Jeter's second.
I won't take you going to put your hands in.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm, I'll beat you next time. My problem, I'll look at you for sure.
I don't mind to get beat, but by senior citizen, I'd be.
Oh, Lord.
That ain't much different, sir.
Alright. Uh, yeah, the, uh, everybody vote by way of saying ah.
Ah.
Uh, opposed? Alright, motion carries. Thank you all.
Okay, on, uh, miscellaneous here, I guess first of all, I wanted to call on Mr. Dingus, uh, to give us an update on where we're at with recycling. I think he's got an exciting update for us.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Uh, morning, board. As you know, uh, we signed a MOU of Southern County, uh, two, three months ago, uh, that would enable us to take our recycled material to, uh, Southern County in Blountville. Uh, in the interim, we've been, uh, working, uh, Scott Services has been helping us refurbish our old, uh, recycle bins, and, uh, they have several of them that's been repainted, and, uh, we're, uh, ready, uh, to deploy. So what we're looking at, we have fourteen sites in the county, but we're going to, to try to deploy to seven of them, initially, and, uh, get back into the logistics of getting those bins, because as you know, our guys are running, doing all they can to keep up with, uh, junk boxes and, uh, the, uh, front, uh, metal box and all that. So we're going to ease into it, but, uh, your citizens will be able to start recycling hopefully by the end of the week or the next week as we deploy those out. The sites we're looking at are, are most visited sites, or they were, uh, picked just because of, uh, their location in the county. Uh, it's gonna be Duffield, Danil Boone, Yuma, Nicholsville, Hiltons, Antioch, and Fort Blackmore. So, uh, you know, we'll, we'll try to reach on out to Dugannon, but hopefully the people in Dugannon can utilize the Fort Blackmore, and also the people in Alley Valley and things like that. Uh, we'll also have a bin at the transfer station, uh, that people can come and, uh, put their paper and plastic, uh, in those bins. The bins that we're deploying, the roll-off bins, are, uh, for paper and plastic. Uh, as we go along and we get, uh, further into it, we will, uh, start including our cardboard pickup, which, uh, that's a different logistics that takes a packer truck, and our aluminum pickup, which also takes a packer truck. Hopefully, these bins will reduce the demand on the green boxes inside. It's a different type of truck. You know, I've talked to you about capacity at a site is based on more of how many dumpsters are at a site, but it's based more on the truck's capacity. Well, this is a different style truck that's picking up this other material. Uh, so, uh, it does increase our capacity. And hopefully people will, uh, you know, we have the issue where we have the sites open all the time and only twenty-four hours of, uh, labor to man the sites, so it's gonna be up to our citizens to, uh, follow the rules and, and recycle. Uh, we can't take dirty recycled material to, uh, Blountville. Uh, so if we get, uh, continued, uh, contaminated loads, we're, we're gonna have to stop or, or only put them at a site that's manned while, while they're there. So hopefully that won't be a problem, but, uh, and people seem to want this. I've been asked about recycling ever since the China Shield thing happened. It just pretty much, uh, mixed, uh, recycling throughout the whole country in, uh, 2019, I think.
Do you think it'd be profitable, be on by the recycling?
Profitable?
Yeah.
It will divert waste that we have to take to the landfill and pay, uh, the tipping fee, which is about total fifty, fifty dollars a ton or so. Uh, it will divert that. Now, as far as, uh, at the end of the day budget, probably not. I mean, you're, you're gonna break even at best.
Really, if I've been there to the landfill, used to deliver, I think seven loads a day in them dump trucks. And if you've been there, you really don't understand, or you wouldn't think it, by plastic, plastic, plastic is in that, and you see them scraping and packing, packing and packing, and, but you really wouldn't believe the plastic you really see in them. It's really a lot more than I would have considered.
There, there's gonna be, uh, benefits. Like I said, the capacity of sites would be huge. That, that means if people are recycling material, uh, green dumpsters may be available more often until the packer trucks come, which is a benefit to the system. As far as a tangible monetary amount at the end of the year, that is to be told. Uh, you know, I might be able to compare numbers after, uh, a certain time. Uh, you know, it's, it's what we wanna do, I think, as a society.
Yes.
It's the thing to do. It's a responsible thing to do. I have, uh, I've had a lot of people that want that. Uh, you know, the people that have moved in from metropolitan areas are used to that, and they're asking about it, so.
Now, you need to go to Florida where you can't dig a hole, and you need to see, they make a mountain with trash. Now, I mean, you travel all over Florida, like I have with a truck, birds that you can't believe coming in there, and you really wouldn't think signals is in Bristol or Blountville, but there are thousands of them up there, coming that far inland to that now. Till you've been there and seen it, it's really unbelievable.
Now, we, we haul trash at fourteen sites, six days a week, and if we, uh, one of our trucks are down for a day, and we don't get the Duffield, it's full and running over and has to close, or Nicholsville or any of them. It, it's, it's amazing how much trash we.
Yes, they're gonna be on the roll-off.
These will be roll-off. If you wanna look at them, uh, uh, we have them, uh, up at the landfill and the field where they've been painting them. Scott Services, uh, did the painting for us, did a good job on it. We appreciate that.
When you place the roll-offs, will you have to pull any of the other bins out?
No, uh, we shouldn't. Uh, we have plenty of room at, uh, most of those sites. Some of them, we might have to look around a little bit and see how to do that, but, no, we should, should have a place to put them. We had them already before. We had, uh, these bins in the sites before, uh, the bottom fell out of recycling. We just staged them up at the, uh, landfill property until this opportunity came about. And we've been looking, I've been working with the regional solid waste group for five years now, and we have looked and visited sites, uh, you know, it's like Catfield from, uh, uh, Wise County, and, uh, people from every county up to Smith is in that group. And, uh, this is really the first opportunity that's presented itself that's feasible. Now, we could have always taken it to Knoxville, but that's not feasible, no.
I did have two or three other things, but not on this particular topic. That's all, Mr. Dingus is here. Uh, I noticed coming down today in, in, uh, town, it looks like a, maybe a new business getting started. They pick up trucks with the manufactured collection thing. Do you know anything about that?
Uh, I do. They, uh, they came in and we have a hauler's permit. They applied for a hauler's permit. It's like a hundred dollars a year that, uh, if you're hauling trash in the county, that, uh, we require. Uh, I think it's based out of, uh, Washington County. Uh, they're, uh, providing household pickup to people. I think, uh, also, there's a, a couple of local, uh, uh, people that has partnered with them. Uh, I don't know the complete logistics of it, but I've seen their advertisement that, uh, they're, they're offering household pickup. Uh, you know, that, that will make two of them in the county, uh, including Clint River Trash, uh, which, uh, I hope to get over house in the county. I know that would be, that would be a great, uh, benefit to, to everybody.
The other thing I was gonna cover later in the meeting, but since you're here, we, uh, at an earlier meeting, uh, we discussed a debit card for tipping fees at the landfill. Is anything used of credit cards instead of cash? Have you looked into any of that or?
Right back two or three months ago or something.
Yeah, um, we talked about that briefly, but I'll have to follow back up. I, I know we've talked.
Isn't there a fee whenever you do that?
There, there's a fee, like a three percent or five percent fee. Uh, you know, we, we've talked about that. I think where that discussion went after that meeting, uh, we talked about it briefly, but, you know, the, the discussion always go, well, if we, we do it there, do we wanna do with the building official and, you know, other places that we might, or at the animal shelter? Uh, so it gets into a, a bigger discussion, but yeah, that, uh, I understand the need, uh, up at the transfer station especially. People usually don't have the cash, and it'd be great to be able to swap a debit card if you need to. We'll, we'll roll back around to that.
Uh, there was convictions recently, which seemed like to be increasing, uh, for litter control violations. And, uh, is there any way that we could advertise? I don't think, I don't think that's being put in the paper. Is there any way to list that in the paper? To let people know that if you violate our policies, you will be convicted?
Maybe like a, a number of violations. We don't wanna do names.
Well, yeah, they're, you know, they're misdemeanors for the most part. Uh, it's, uh, uh, I know the sheriff's offices are convicted thing and thing, something like that, but, uh, I don't know. It's, it's, you know, we wanna be consistent if you do something like that. Uh, we can give, uh, you all a report, uh, either quarterly or, it's a little tough. You know, they, they, everything don't happen and get done in a month on those convictions. You know, it's usually pretty timely. Uh, you know, there's an investigation, there's a, uh, a charge, there's a schedule in court, there's all that. So, uh, maybe a quarterly report that, uh, Mr. Wilson could do during his time to let people know. Would that be?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful.
Okay.
As a deterrent. Uh, and along those lines, the, uh, we were gonna have a little more discussion, I think, on the tag readers.
Mm-hmm.
On how that worked, not necessarily identifying their locations at this point, but just how it works.
Right.
To let the public know that you're being watched, violations will be prosecuted.
They, they've been beneficial, uh, you know, with the old cameras, we could see something happen, like in the, in the site. It was tough to identify them. Uh, now, if we see something happen, or usually we're looking at, we're not watching the cameras and like, oh yeah, that, you know, John Doe's doing this, we get a tip that something has had, happened. So we can go back in the cameras, view that this person dumped this or, or whatever. And then, uh, we can look at the tag reader, and as it comes in, we can identify, uh, that person. And I know that, uh, uh, litter control has made some, uh, at least gave some summons based on that. And, uh, I'd have to look into prosecutions, but, uh, it's, and then, then we have them, you know, we have them at five sites, so, uh, we don't have them in all of them, so that would be advantageous if we did, but.
But once you, once you identify a person's tag, can you go, will it do a search and give you a printout of all the times that that person has been at each site of those locations that have tag readers?
Yes, I'm not the best person to talk about that. Uh, Matt could explain that better, but it will. We have, we have, uh, the permits that we give to, like, Tennessee residents, uh, in a database, and it can look for that tag in the database and confirm that, you know, they have a permit. Uh, but also, you mentioned, uh, uh, say we have somebody that's scavenging. We, we get a tip and we go and they're scavenging at, uh, 1:00 AM. We can look at the, uh, camera, identify that tag, then we can look at the database and see where that tag has been for the last month, so you can go back and look and see what they did in that site, in that site.
You don't have to manually go through and look at a hundred thousand photos to pull up.
Not anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a whole lot better camera system. Used to, it was like, you know, if, uh, somebody gave me a timeframe, uh, I could, uh, look at it, but it would take a while to actually see it occur. Uh, but these, uh, uh, they've, one thing they do is, uh, they indicate that there's activity. So if somebody just comes in, throws their trash away, it'll like redline that time. So when it's not redlined, you don't have to look at it, but, uh, and then the tag readers, uh, keeps it in a database.
It's a very powerful tool, and I, uh, I have talked to Mr. Bright, and he's offered, I don't know, you know, those of you that are on the solid waste, uh, committee, he would be more than willing to do a, a demonstration, and then also those that, of you that aren't, you know, uh, stop by. He'd be more than happy to kinda show you how it works, but, yeah, it's a powerful tool, you know, the tags, it'll keep that. You know, if you find one tag, it'll run that number and show you every time that tag was in and out. Uh, yeah, and it'll show whether or not they've applied for a permit or, or anything. I mean, you can search by a color or a make of a vehicle. I mean, it's, it's very powerful.
Right.
We're, we're lucky to have it.
That's really cool.
Well, you know, we, we still have the issues of being open a hundred and thirty hours a week with twenty-four hours budgeted to man them. Uh, so, uh, I'll always say that when I can. You know, if you wanna stop most of the issues, like scavenging, stealing metal, illegal dumping, have them manned when they're open. Maybe, maybe close them at night and have them manned when they're open. Otherwise, it's inevitable that you're gonna have, uh, issues from time to time.
Thank you, Mr. Dingus.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just got a few other things here. I did wanna circle back and highlight, we had talked about Brittany and the work she's done, and it's, she's certainly done great work. Um, she put together the, uh, the first Makers and Growers, uh, festival was this past, uh, Friday and Saturday. Um, it was a huge success. Uh, she has already said that she's making preparations to do it again next year. And, uh, even looking to grow, I think, the, the vendors. So, you know, I wanna thank her for her hard work to put that together. It was a great thing for the county. Thank, uh, all the vendors that showed up, and thank, uh, the, uh, um, career tech, um, for allowing, you know, us to use that space, and I think also the church it may have spilled over there, so thank you to them. Um, and, uh, I think that's a great partnership. And I think that's a great partnership with school system to do that, so.
That's great.
Mr. France will probably touch on it. I just had it in my notes here, that the lawnmower was delivered to Keith Memorial Park, so that's good. They have a new mower to work with there. And also the roof on the amphitheater was redone and fixed. And also the storage shed roof has been replaced. Many of you maybe saw on Facebook, the Man Farms post about their donated proceeds from September 20th, but I just wanted to highlight that. That was a great thing that they did. All the proceeds from that day, they split evenly amongst Port Blackmore Center of Excellence, Scott County Hope House, and Scott County DSS. And the total proceeds from that day that was split was $12,800. So kudos to them and thank you for all that they do. A little bit of unfinished business at our last meeting, was that maybe last meeting or one of the previous ones, we had voted on a voting member for the VACO conference. I did get a voting credentials form this week, and we just need to also vote for an alternate delegate. So I would assume if-
I'll nominate, Sandy.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Let's see, I'll, I guess I'll vote that, or I'll say that nomination ceases and we vote by acclamation. Yeah, I think we did that right. Everybody in favor of vote my way of saying aye?
Just second for that motion.
Oh, do I, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
You're second. Oh, actually, Danny, you want to say it?
Yeah.
Okay. Danny will say.
I got fat over it.
All right, okay. With myself moving and then Danny seconding, everybody vote my way of saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
What are your objectives for that meeting?
For the VACO conference? Well, we're certainly, you know, to see what everybody, I mean, I've never been to one, so I don't know how these things go. But, you know, I know it's always a good thing to go to these to see what's going on in the rest of the state, see what other counties are doing, get some ideas, and also advocate for, you know, what we have going on here and showcase how great Scott County is.
Yeah, so one of the things I will say, you know, I did have a presentation coming out of that last year, and I would appreciate if any of our board supervisor, the two board supervisor members that are going, if y'all want to collaborate and have a presentation for the rest of the board, I would really appreciate that. That, I felt like that was a good touch because a lot of people see that you're going to a big meeting out of town and they don't know exactly what's going on up there or what we can gain from there. I will say some tangible things that we did gain is we gained some good contacts for housing construction, and I think that is coming to fruition with things that are going on through the EDA. That's where they met the folks that are advising them on all their grant proposals and stuff like that, so. And there have been some counties that are very successful in that and had very successful programs. I would just like to say from my perspective, both on housing and tourism and industry, if any of y'all can do anything for that while you're up there, if you can find anything for that, I appreciate that. I know there's a lot of vendors. I talked to a bunch of folks last time. I tried to, I tried to sweet talk Verizon because they had a booth there into putting up more towers, but that was a dead end there. But, you know, there's a, a lot of opportunity, a lot of people that are up there, so make the most out of it, talk to everybody. Everybody's got something interesting, either to sell you or to tell you, so. So, sorry, I didn't mean to-
That's good. I remember your presentation.
Yeah.
Very good.
So I had touched on at the last meeting that there's going to be some funding out there for disaster relief. That stuff has started to open up, applications have opened. I've been at a couple different meetings on this. The governor is definitely pushing and opening up funds. It's a, it's a great thing to hopefully be able to get people some relief. Anything, I will say there's kind of two general buckets. Anything with like housing as far as being displaced from your home, which we had some, a list of folks that we've already have those in motion, those applications. That kind of side of it's going to run through Lina Wisco. Anybody that has anything that wants to reach out can still certainly reach out to us and we can help them with that. We'll be working with Lina Wisco to get those applications completed. And then also on the farm recovery block grant, you know, that's crop loss, timber loss, you know, anything like that. I know Extension Office has kind of taken the lead on that. But again, if you have anything, you can feel free to reach out to me and we can get you pointed in the right direction. It's an exciting thing. It's a much needed pool of money that, you know, hopefully can get us recovered from that.
I don't think you've mentioned the, on the Virginia block grant, that runs through November 6th. I don't know if that mentioned-
Correct.
When will the Extension Office be relocating?
Well, we're hoping to, there's going to be a, a few things that we need to prepare for them up at the Soil and Water Building, but I would imagine we'll start the process. They can start packing up ASAP.
But for them, I'd say probably still need to get it in by-
Yes, I would say for right now, yeah. Let's see, I want to highlight an announcement I went to with Project Intersection. They had the ribbon cutting for the new wrap facility, big deal. And that's a, just to remind everybody, that's a RIFA site that the county will be gaining some revenue from. And we are expecting revenue to start flowing from that project intersection to us here very soon, so that's exciting. Exciting deal for the whole region. And then also been working with Mr. Kilgore on a lot of things here recently with the EDA, and he'll highlight those here soon. I believe that's all I've got.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Before we go into the county department's report, we'll take a short break for, we'll say 12 minutes, and we'll be back here at 10:30.
You have the floor, sir.
Good morning.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say we're missing one.
Never mind, hold on, we won't call it back or just yet. I'll step away. I thought I was just waiting on Michelle.
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, I'll have to get that in. Ah, we'll wait on Danny. He's probably out there talking to somebody, somebody will go check on him.
Pop Danny, he don't never talk.
No, Danny, he's quiet. It's hard to get him going. When you do.
He does like to talk.
But it's hard.
It's hard because you don't look that well.
It is, it is, I need to start, I need to sit like this from now on. Danny, I'm about to start without you.
How long wait the first time?
All right, we'll go back into session, sorry about that, sorry about the delays. Mr. France, you have the floor.
Uh, good morning, everyone, uh, I was gonna say, I can probably just walk on out. Mr. Wilson pretty much did my present announcement, I'm glad he touched on those things, though, he went to detail on some stuff that I was gonna touch on, um, as usual, it'll be short and sweet for me, um, I'll start off with the rec side of things, um, Duffield Community Park, which I don't talk about a whole lot, it kinda gets, you know, a little, it needs, we need to show it a little bit more love, we're doing that right now, uh, we're assisting the Duffield Little League, uh, they're having some drainage issues with their, uh, soft off-hills, so we're helping them out with some resources and, and things with their field repairs there at Duffield Community Park. Mr. Wilson talked about Keith Park, and I just wanna add to that, uh, I really wanna thank Anthony, uh, Williams and Randall Davison, they have done a ton of some little things, some big things, I mean, there was probably six, seven work orders in a short amount of time, uh, that they really handled, uh, well and handled quickly too, uh, I know they've got a lot of their play, um, I really wanna thank Anthony and Randall that they do a great job, um, our Otis Rotten State Farm Youth Volleyball begins this Saturday, I wanna thank Otis Rotten, he has sponsored that volleyball program, I know for over twenty-five years since its inception, uh, so thank him, uh, for that sponsorship, uh, we got another great turnout, over a hundred and twenty kids signed up, that's about what we get, um, our volleyball though is a great league, and honestly, it's a great league because of our volunteer coaches, um, we have some great people, great parents, great coaches that do that for us, that's why it's such a success, and also, um, I do wanna thank, well, Mr. Ferguson left, but, um, I wanna thank Scott County Schools, they are a great partner for me, um, we use their gyms, their facilities for all our practices and games, we also use Webber City First Baptist Church Gym, uh, you know, I don't have my own facility, so that partnership, uh, is crucial for us, uh, and lastly, I do wanna thank Haley Reed, uh, well, Haley Duncan, she was Haley Reed Duncan, uh, she's pretty much been my primary volleyball referee helper assistant for the last ten, twelve years, uh, couldn't do it without her, you know, I'm, I'm a one-man rec department most of the time, but, uh, she's a great help, uh, she's reliable, she's great, she's, uh, couldn't do it without Haley, thank you to Haley, so, uh, now I'll hop down to the golf course side of things, uh, we just recently completed our greens aerification and greens maintenance, basically that's once a year, not always, but once a year, we, we have a machine that puts, you know, four, five, six inch holes in the greens, we fill them up with sand, it's a necessary evil, I say necessary evil because if you're a golfer, you hate to hear aerifying, because that means the course is shut down for a couple of days, and that means the greens are a little hairy, a little bumpy, a little sandy, uh, but we're, we're very fortunate, those greens were built extremely well, they are already completely healed up, um, unless you knew what you were looking for, or you stepped on that green right now, you wouldn't be able to tell we aerified, and that's just been in the last three weeks, uh, I have golf on other courses, and sometimes I'll be like, man, they aerified recently, they're like, no, that was two months ago, I'm like, oh, okay, whoa, ours healed up very fast, so we're very fortunate, um, another little thing about the golf course, we finally sell Callaway stuff now, uh, that was kinda the last major golf brand, uh, we didn't have, there used to be some crazy rules and stipulations with Callaway, they dropped those, so, uh, a lot of golfers happy we got Callaway, so now we have pretty much every major brand, you can get equipment, uh, and gear from, from them, so that was good. Membership still increasing, play still like crazy high, uh, room rentals, I know like October, if I'm not mistaken, every Saturday and Sunday is rented, a couple of Fridays are rented, and that's not to mention our weekly stuff, you know, Rotary, Chamber of Commerce is next week, there's a yoga class using it twice a week, so that room's being utilized a lot, uh, so, all that's going good, um, the revenue, um, you know, I've been coming here for a couple of years, and it's been big leaps, big percentages, big jumps, I knew there was gonna come a time we finally, I feel like topped out, not necessarily lost anything, I did the figuring, and right now, we are at a one percent increase over last year, so, um, obviously, you wish you could just keep growing, 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 but I wanna touch on that a little bit, um, we could always have a little bit more play during the weeks, but really, I think we've about, or we're about as busy as we can be, and I say that because on weekends now, if it's a pretty weekend, by ten thirty, eleven, we're out of cards, and when I say out of cards, more cards would help, I mean, that's the, we got twenty-six, that's the most you can have on an whole course, and by ten thirty, eleven, it's, they're, they're booked, and people are waiting, so, uh, I will say this, um, you know, we had the hurricane, the storms last year, that October, we were shut down for about two to three weeks, uh, completely closed, so that October should bump us back up some, but I do wanna say, you know, those, I'm probably not gonna be coming to you anymore with the fifty and sixty and seventy percent increases, uh, just because I feel like we've almost crested, if that makes sense, uh, you know, like I said, we can always get a little bit more weekday play, but we're about as busy as we can be, uh, we, we always talk about that now, like mowing during the week, you know, used to, you can mow fairways during the week, and, you know, Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday, you would see a couple of people, now, you're waiting for multiple people to get through, so, uh, we're, we're very busy, um, and I, I think we'll stay that way with memberships and everything. Uh, lastly, and I know I always do this, but I really wanna thank Scott Gerald, uh, a lot of our success is due to him, um, he's a great partner, great resource, uh, the stuff he's helped us with it there, you know, people will say the course looks as good as it ever has, Scott's a big, big, big part of that, a huge part of that, so I'm never not gonna recognize Scott for that, uh, keep him with the theme, theme of Scott's, uh, Scott Service again, they do so much to help us out there, I know they help, I know they help all the, all the different entities in the county, but, uh, they really help us out a lot, uh, Scott Services, I, I, I don't know what we did before them, really, it's one of those things where I look back, I'm like, how in the world did we do this before Scott Service? And then, lastly, someone I've not mentioned before, Charlie Stone Jr., I don't know if y'all are familiar with him, um, anytime we have big projects at the golf course, like greens aerification, or some of the, um, landscaping things we'll do, Charlie almost always volunteers his time and equipment to us, um, that would be a huge expense if we had to do that ourselves, uh, so, really wanna thank Charlie Stone Jr. for years, he's done that for us, where he comes up and he volunteers a couple of days' work in big equipment that costs a lot of money, so, takes a village, I'm lucky we've got a good village, so, that's all I've got for today, um, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to try to answer them, so.
Is the golf course showing a profit?
Uh, it, no, it does not show a profit, um, and I don't wanna steal someone else's words, but I'm trying to put it into my words, um, you know, that golf course, um, it's not just a golf course, there's a walking trail that the cross-country team uses, there's tennis courts, there's picnic shelters, um, it's a, yes, I'd love to have a huge profit, but, uh, I look at it as a asset to the county and to the citizens, it's, it's a green space for people, you know, people either lunch at there every day, um, use that room, obviously, we offer things at a discount to the citizens, you know, things are cheaper there than they are other places, uh, so, uh, no, it doesn't turn a profit, I'll just be completely honest with you, and I don't, I don't see that it could, and I don't know that it was necessarily designed to, if that makes sense, it's a, you know, it's like a park, or like a green space for the community, you know, so.
Has Brittany made a video of it and advertised it?
She has not, but when you are talking today, um, and I've seen some of her stuff, the Instagram reels and the, and, uh, I won't be greedy, but I think I'm gonna reach out to her and say, you know, when it works out for you, or maybe it's next summer, or whenever we're looking, you know, April, we're looking good, like, uh, I was gonna reach out to her and, cause I think that would be a, a cool little thing, and you know, any, any reach you get out there, you're gonna grab somebody maybe doesn't know, you know, so, uh, I know one thing, you know, like the Instagram reel she does, Chance Taylor, I'll brag on Chance, Chance makes TikToks, he has a very, very big TikTok page, he's a boy from Nicholsville that is trying to make it on the pro tour golfing, and you'd be shocked at how many people come up there, like, hey, man, is this where Chance plays, and we wanna come up here because we saw this on Chance's TikTok, you know, and I always tell Chance, like, Chance, you're our best ambassador there is, so, that stuff, that internet, that social media, it gets out there, uh, I'm shocked at how many people come up and say, do you know Chance Taylor, that's why we come up here, I'm like, absolutely, man, so, uh, yes, I, I, I plan on reaching out to Brittany, cause during your honest conversation, I thought, hmm, if I don't wanna, I may not try to bug her too much, but that'd be a good idea, so, thank you, yep.
Now, I think it'd be good too with the leaves turning, with your.
Fall, well, he was just saying there too, there, we get a lot of people, oh, are you here to golf, no, I'm here to take pictures and to sites, you know, to, to visit and to look, or we drove from such, you know, thirty minutes away, an hour away, and they said this is the best view of the, the valley here, you know, the gap, so that, that happens quite a bit, so, yeah, yeah, fall would, you're right, fall's my favorite time up there, the, the mountains and the leaves, it's my favorite, golfers don't like the leaves as much as I do, that's, that's the battle, you know, when, right when the mowing slows down, you think you've got a breath of fresh air, and then, next thing you know, you blow leaves and you go inside and eat lunch, and it looks like you haven't even touched it, you gotta go back out, so, that's the bad thing about those pretty trees, they drop a lot of leaves, so.
I know.
Now, I appreciate, you know, I talked about Anthony Randall, I talked about Scott, so I appreciate you, I, like I said, it takes everybody, and we've got a great, uh, a great system around us, so thank you all for all the work y'all have done and, uh, support us, I appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
All right, um, Economic Developmental Authority, John Killian, do you wanna come on up?
Good morning, members of the board, thanks for the opportunity to present, and uh, I couldn't do this without the board, and I appreciate the board's support, and uh, introduce, of course, Roger Frazier as our chairman in the back, but also, uh, the, the support staff, Penny and, of course, Sally cannot do the job without those people, I mean, it just wouldn't go, it wouldn't flow too good without those, all those people that are here, and of course, the staff, Tina and Amy help as well, so everybody's working together, thank you all. So Riverside Development, uh, uh, cover a little bit on that, uh, so, still working with Solendi on that, and that was a partnership, you know, they announced this project, and we continue to work with prospective businesses for the site, we see they approved a lien release on that part of the property, and the housing application for Riverside, we initially submitted that with the developer, and that was not approved, however, they have, uh, if you see the last bullet point, VDH, Virginia Department Housing, has released the opening date for the next round, they're starting to work on that application, and they've, uh, benchmarked with some others, uh, around the state to get, uh, a better application in, and not to say that it wasn't a good application the first time, but you can always make it better, you can always improve on that, and that's what they were trying to do, so they benchmarked, and they, they're improving on that and making it better. So they'll put in another application, the interesting thing about housing is recently, the, uh, Virginia Co-Build Economic Development Authority, uh, put some money into housing, and they approved a hundred thousand dollar grant for this site for infrastructure development, and that, that should go a long way to helping, you know, put the infrastructure, uh, road, whether it be water, sewer, or, you know, broadband to those, uh, housing, to the housing project, so that, and also, uh, another thing, the developer has initiated work on the daycare facility, and that's moving right along, and hopefully, if we can get, uh, you know, anything started, you know, that's, uh, it'll just happen, and you'll see things come out of the ground, and it'll help us all, once we get the daycare started. Here's the, of course, what the, uh, they presented initially, and of course, they're working with the engineer, and this will change somewhat, because the workforce housing has changed, because after their meeting with the planning commission, they changed the location of those, so they're working on the final, they have, they've got an engineer out there that they're working with on this, and, uh, they'll work with a, another architect, maybe not this architect, but this is the architect that Solendi uses, DK Levy, ooh, sorry. Also, uh, we, uh, applied, uh, last year for Virginia Department, uh, Virginia Tobacco Commission grant for the Virginia Business Ready Site Program, so, uh, the site in Duffield, the technology part is a level two according to BDP, and you can go up to level five, the only reason it's a level two is because some of those studies were outdated, like your environmental, your archaeological and historic, stuff like that, that needs to be updated, so we're, we've got a estimate from our engineer, and we now have applied, uh, submitted application to VDP, uh, Business Ready Site Accelerated Site Characterization Grant, so we can do that, which was different from just going into the pool with the other, uh, Business Ready Site Programs, this is a site characterization, so we can, uh, we've already submitted that, we didn't have to wait on, uh, for them to open up applications in November, they're, they can be submitted anytime, so we've submitted that application. But also, uh, the Pioneer Center Roof, that was needed replacement, as some of y'all are aware of that, that's a building that's owned by the EDA, is managed by Mountain Empire Community College until yesterday, and we're trying to work out that with the MIRBY Board to see how to move forward on that, so we've got that, we've got the grant for the tobacco commission, we also received a AMLA grant, which through the Virginia Department of Energy for the match for that roof, so we'll continue to work through the AMLA process and tobacco commission process to get a roof on the facility, and, uh, we'll see how, uh, we wanna move forward with the management of the facility as well with MIRBY. We do, uh, continue to work with small businesses, to the RV loans, to the ribbon cuttings, and, uh, we've had fifteen ribbon cuttings this year, and, uh, we continue to work through that with the Chamber, Chamber of Commerce, we share offices, we've had, we've done that since I've been here, they did that a little before I got here, and it's, uh, it's They did that a little before I got here, and it's, uh, it's worked great. So, uh, we continue to work closely with the Chamber of Commerce. And we've continued to, we have the R-Beg, uh, loan program, and it's actually Rural Business Development Grant. It started as R-Beg Rural Business Enterprise Grant Program, and it changed names. So that was through Rural Development, and we've had forty loans approved to date, and, uh, that equates to eighty-six employees, and seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars we've put out as far as loans. Now, this is not counting, go to the next slide, I mean, the seed capital, if you think about the seed capital, that's what VCD does. So VCD has approved twenty-five businesses for the seed capital grant, that equals to two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So we're, we're currently working with one business on a new seed capital. They'll go in two weeks to the, uh, VCD Board, and then they'll see if that's approved, and it'll be at their November meeting if they approve another, uh, seed capital grant. We're also, as it came up in a meeting before on Virginia Enterprise Zone, we've had a, uh, meeting with Leno Westco and staff. And what we're doing now, we're working with, uh, DHCD, Department of Housing and Community, Community Development, easy for me to say. So we're working with them, and, uh, uh, we had a call today with, uh, a couple of the towns. We have another call tomorrow with a couple more towns. So if you realize the Enterprise Zone, it initially was just Duffield. So when we expanded years ago, it included towns of Gate City, Nicholsville, Dungannon, and Weber City. So we're having calls with those to see if, and get their input on the Enterprise Zone to see what suggestions they might have for that Enterprise Zone to change incentives. To change incentives, of course, it would have to come back to the Board eventually, but we're not ready for that. Uh, it, uh, we can do that in the first quarter of next year, but we'll work with these towns, and if we need to make any changes, we would bring that back. And then it has to be approved by DHCD, so that will be the final step, but it has to come back here. So we'll work in that, and once we meet with the towns, we'll get staff back together, and we'll talk about it with Leno Westco, and then move forward on that. There's the seed capital, I got ahead of myself, but anyway, we, we have two Scott County businesses received in 2025 already, and then we're working with that one business. And then we're currently working with nine prospects, some of those come through, uh, uh, RFPs or requests for proposals. We work with, again, we work with TBA, we work with, uh, Virginia Economic Development Partnership, we work with VCD, and, and we could get the lead ourselves, so a number of entities, and we can get leads that way. Then we respond to those leads, and that's how we count as prospects. If we don't, uh, you know, if we get any prospect lead, we respond to them some way. We may not have the building, some of them may request a hundred thousand square foot building. We don't have that anywhere in the, in the, in the county, uh, that we own. Uh, we could point them to a, a private building, but we don't have any public buildings that we own like that. Or if you, uh, you know, they say they wanted a hundred acre site. We don't have a hundred acre site in Scott County that, that we own. So anyway, any questions on that at all? Uh, I, I would end with this, we've had, of course, if you look at over the years, twenty-five million dollars in grants in the, in the last twenty years. And, uh, we've had, uh, fifteen ribbon cuttings, as I mentioned before. Uh, seven of the top twenty largest employers in the Leno Westco region are in Scott County. We, uh, support small businesses, I mentioned, and total private investment in Duffield alone is a hundred and fourteen million dollars.
How many square feet does Pioneer Center have down there?
Forty-six thousand total. That's the total, and that's not the total that's available, it's about half of that would be available. They, they have it rented out, uh, MIRBY had it rented out. And we, again, we've gotta work through the Board, look at the leases, and then see what, how we're gonna move forward.
The property down on Riverside, uh, on the, uh, you said that we's moving forward with the daycare. Uh, who's gonna build that?
That'll be the same developer, and he's using a contractor and an engineer. There's an engineer out of Lebanon, so they will have a contractor on side.
Are they, are they gonna be the one that owns it, or the county gonna own it?
No, the county don't own it, the church will own it and operate it.
I thought we leased the property to church.
They'll, they'll set up their own organization to run it. We don't, we, and we're not in the business of running daycares.
So, uh, did we sell it to them, or give it to them, or how did they go and acquire?
No, they're leasing that property now.
Yeah, but how, if they're leasing it, then they're gonna take and build a daycare. Uh, the county's property, is the county gonna own it, or, or is the contractor gonna own it?
We still own the property, we went and owned the building, so we've gotta work through those details. We still got, that's a work in progress.
Something don't make sense to me, because I don't know why a man would build a building on somebody else's property. Can you explain that?
We'll have to work through them, and we'll come back at a later time with an answer on how they wanna perceive of that.
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
Pizza Plus in Nicholsville is, uh, the owner is Daniel and Cheryl Morrison, and the property is owned by the quarters.
Ground lease.
Yeah, but, but they're leasing it, and it's a ten acre or a certain length of time, it'll go back to quarters. I wonder if that's gonna be the way the county is, or how that piece of property's gonna end up, or?
I, I think a lot of business parks work that way. If I remember some details from, uh, a deal that I was close to, they leased the land, and they built the building, and.
Right.
There's an agreement that's worked out for.
And, and we would have to work through VCD on that, cause they, remember, they got the lien on the land.
That's right.
Lien on the buildings.
So we can't do anything without having.
Right.
Three lullabies.
That gone, through a couple of attorneys, right, to work through that process, yes.
Um, I, I'd, Christina and the one that's leasing the property there to church, ain't they brothers or something, ain't they some kin?
No, not VCD, no.
Whoever's over the contractor, that's over VCD.
No.
Salinity? Salinity, yeah, I got it mixed up.
VCD is its own entity.
VCD is its own entity, they're not related to Salinity, no.
VCD is not a.
Are you asking if Salinity is.
The Salinity is one of me.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yes.
Salinity is a separate entity too. You have a church, are they related, the owner of Salinity, or the operator of Salinity, and the church pastor, yes? But you have an organization of the church that runs the church. You have an organization that runs the Salinity. So he's the CEO of Salinity, so, yes, they're two separate entities. They're related, yes.
Who, who's gonna be managing the daycare? Is that gonna be Salinity, or is that gonna be the church?
Church.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah.
Will the daycare be connected to the building that's our now, John?
It'll be connected some way, and they're still working with the engineer on the plans to finish the plans on that. He's not finished it yet.
They moved it to the back of the building.
That's what they're looking at, yes, yeah, for sure.
It has to give, uh, some area for like, uh.
For a playground, yeah, and, and to make it more accessible for children, yes.
Uh, during citizens' expression, a lady had a few questions, I just spread down a couple. And I don't know if this applies, but she mentioned escrow account cost overruns in regards to the Riverside project? Not, don't know.
I don't have an escrow account for Riverside.
Was, was, was that land gifted, or was it sold?
What?
The, the housing project.
The land was sold to us, we still hold that.
So how, how does the development?
We haven't transferred anything.
So will it be given to them or sold?
No, we have not given anything to them, we've got that in there, where they will give money back to us.
So it's basically a sale, sale agreement, okay. Uh, the other thing on the Enterprise Zone, on small businesses, have you had any participation in the tax incentive program for small businesses in the Enterprise Zone? I know several in Duffield are participating, but are any small businesses qualified for those tax incentives?
There's a lot of businesses that have qualified, and whether they take advantage of that, uh, that's another story, we can actually notify them, and we've done that, you know, if you got Dollar General's a small business, even though it's a large corporation, but when they put it wanting a community, it's small. So we've notified them, and they, uh, sometimes they'll take advantage of it. I'll give you an example, Photogenesis over here is a small business that took advantage of the Enterprise Zone incentives. We have, uh, a, a number of businesses that you're not, probably not aware of, that'll get state Enterprise Zone incentives, but they didn't apply to, to the local incentives. Food City, Taco Bell, Dollar General, they might have been a state incentive, but they didn't apply those.
There's a certain number of employees that you have to.
Right, but they may not want to fool with that, uh, applying, you know, going through the process. And that's what we gotta talk about with the towns and everything, to see what works the best, and see what we can do as an incentive that works better for everybody.
Appreciate you, John.
Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, did anybody else have any questions?
No, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, and now our, uh, uh, esteemed treasurer and Commissioner Randall. Sorry, I tried to make that sound fancy, and I tripped over halfway through, sorry.
Good morning.
The honorable.
Good morning.
The honorable Mr. Hamzah and the honorable Ms. Tiller.
We appreciate all the compliments. We're starting up. Uh, honestly, we are here on a serious, serious note. I have not been able to get my real estate book completed.
Could you speak up a little bit?
I have not been able to complete my real estate book to give it to Kevin, which was due September the first, back home. We have been working with the software, it's a software problem. Our new software for real estate is concise, and it is great. I feel like it's gonna be, that we did a good decision. However, with the concise extraction over to the BRITs, a programmer, the main programmer, quit during our testing, so if I'm throwing anybody under the bus, I really am, this time. But that's caused us a problem with the software being able to run the books, and I have to use the BRIT system to run the books, because that's what Kevin works off of as well. And when I say run the books, that means all the tax tickets in the real estate for the county. So since he can't access it just yet, and I just talked to, to the new programmer, and he's worked really hard, we've worked throughout the whole month trying to get everything situated, and we keep running into other problems. And today, our last thing, my conversation was after I spoke to ask to be on this today. He said, he sees our, uh, we have a district problem, they're not feeding into, which is our town districts, Gate City, Weber City, Al-Furqusen, Decab, all those. Every parcel has a district, but none of them are showing up in the BRIT system. So he's making a modification, and just before I came in here, I then talked to him. He said he's working on that, and he's gonna look into another problem that we cannot pull by names. It will not pull my account by name, it won't pull anyone's account hardly by name. So he's working on that. That's the last conversation, he said, I'll let you know. So we wanted you to know, I'm behind, which causes all the towns to be behind, which causes Kevin to be behind. And we can't without the software, we're at their mercy. So we're working on it, I just want y'all to know that. But we're up against the timeline of the tickets being out, and the tickets being due. And I wanted you all to be aware, and if there's a decision that needs to be made on the extension for the due date, or we may get it fixed today, but there's no guarantee.
Yeah, losing Roger Bright was a hit, not just our county, but a lot of counties. Roger Burrows has been with Bright for a very long time. And then you hire new programmers who aren't familiar with, um, the situation, so. That's where we are, unfortunately. And I'll take any questions. You know, our personal.
And I will too.
Yeah, personal property's been uploaded, personal property 2025's in the register, so folks can come in and, and make patents on the vehicles now. Uh, the, even without bill, it's in, it's in the register. The printing company being, um, excuse me, ABS that we went with this year, they're ready to print the tickets, um, got the formats set up and things. Obviously, if, if the Board decides to maybe give an extension, we could revise those tax tickets. And that, that could be done in, in a day, I mean, that could be done immediately. And the turnaround time, once, uh, I get a data file, I look over that, approve it, send it to the printer, they send some proofs back, we approve it, it can have it dropped and mailed within two days. So, you know, Code Virginia talks about having bills to the taxpayers fourteen days prior to the due date. I would not wanna do that, give a, a real estate bill fourteen days before November the twentieth. But a lot of counties are, are looking at like thirty days as kind of their practice, thirty to forty days is what, what we're looking at. We generally, uh, in the past, I think, mail the bills out around the first of October, which is, you know, today, first week of October. So we're kind of still in the timeline of where we normally are. If they can resolve this data issue with Bright and, and get us the file, get Tany the file, and then over to me, you know, it could be, if it's, if it's resolved today, it could potentially be in the mail by this weekend. So, um, we're just kind of, we don't have an answer yet. So we wanna kind of let the Board know, but that's the situation currently. And if there's any thought about extending a deadline, I know we're, you know, this is our Board meeting, and so we're, you know, we're on a time crunch and trying to get things accomplished. But if the Board is interested or inclined to extend the due date, um, that's, I'm just throwing that out there, if that's something the Board wants to do. We're still in the, the timeframe that we have been historically. If the tax bills are out this week, um, but we just don't have an answer right now, because the programmers are trying to get these two systems to talk and get everything.
I agree.
So, do you think it'd be a good idea to ex, uh, make an extension today? And what dates would we want to extend to?
I'm hopeful that we can get it done today, but I was hopeful that we could get it done a month ago as well, so. Um, you know, I'm at that point. I don't think it would be a bad idea.
My opinion would be to, to offer an extension.
For how long?
For the taxpayers, I mean, I think it's for the taxpayers.
Yeah, for the taxpayers.
I know in the past, and I don't recall, some of these folks may recall, why we did an extension years ago, they went to December the twentieth, but I don't remember the details of that.
We did, I know, we did an extension when we had a second BOE, and we couldn't get all our information in.
That's what it was, yeah. I know there was years ago, there was an extension.
July twenty-two, I think.
Yeah.
I know that happened for sure.
Did you say you could run the personal property?
It's done.
Without a problem?
It's in, it's in the registers now.
Did you recommend waiting until the real estate goes out and done together, or what?
For postage, perfect, but, yeah, the cost, they generally mesh those bills together, same address, the same owner. We're talking two, two pretties, which would be pretty substantial increase in cost.
What would you want to do, give maybe a thirty days extension?
I mean, I think, I think probably December fifth or December tenth. I mean, I, I mean, the date's kind of arbitrary to me, I, I think an extension was probably something to entertain, but I don't really have a date.
If we extend this, based the first of October, is that gonna allow enough time for it to definitely be fixed?
There's no definite, that's where I'm at, we're hopeful.
What is the cash flow situation?
Um, well, we still have about a little over six million in LTI. And, um, that's, you know, that can be moved back if, if needed. I don't know what kind of bills we're printing today, but.
Yeah, a little over.
A lot of money, but. So, I mean, we're about five million in general checking today, six million in LTI.
Right at a million today.
It'd be too late to extend it on the next meeting, November meeting.
If we don't extend it, and they get it, they're gonna think, they're gonna, we don't approve and change that today. we don't approve and change that today, we'll meet on the first of November, and they're going to have already sent tax bills that are going to be due the 20th.
They don't have the November 20th.
If it gets fixed, or if it doesn't get fixed. So we could move it today and revisit that.
Yeah, I could revise the tax bills, I mean, if you set, if you set an extension of say December 20th, the format of the tax bills, I could get all that resolved and revised before anything gets in the mail.
Okay. So you normally send them out the first of October?
First week of October, which is, I mean, and again, the code requires paying the bills to be, you know, received or whatever with the 14 days of the due date, but we always send them out much earlier than that, just to help people out, let them know, you know, what's going on. But we're getting a lot of calls every day, you know, about the bills being sent and things.
We are too, people want to pay our bills, and I'll have them ready for Kevin to give them.
So when was the latest date you set for an extension, the 10th?
December 10th. Well, I mean, in the past, it went to December 20th.
I wouldn't want to do December the 20th because of Christmas.
Yeah, that's, that's fair, yeah. I would, I would say maybe the 5th or 10th, I mean, again, it's, it's a date that just, I don't know what day that falls on.
The 5th would be a Friday, I think the 10th is like a Wednesday.
The 10th is a Wednesday, yeah, I'm looking at the calendar.
I mean, that, that generally gives, I mean, that's, you know, about a three week extension, essentially, from November 20th.
And if we're still dealing with it, the 10th gives us room to say, hey, as a board, you can come back on December the 3rd and talk to us, you know, if we're still facing issues, we can do whatever we need to do.
I hope we're not. Yeah, I hope today's today.
Yeah, yeah, keep us abreast of this. I think it would be a good idea to extend the deadline to December 10th.
I think December 10th.
Do I have a motion for that?
When did, when did you say it was going to be?
December the 10th. I think that gives a three week extension, that gives you all a little bit more time, gives the board a little bit more time to watch the situation as well.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
All right, Stephanie makes the motion. Mr. Castile seconds. Everybody vote by way of saying aye for an extension until December the 10th.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we'll give extension until December the 10th.
What's the plan?
I'm sorry. I was just going to say, please keep us abreast of your plans and the progress that's being made, we really appreciate it.
I think voting to come and explain that to us today.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any plans to go public notice on the extension?
I don't know, the board does that, I'd be glad to put an ad in the paper and post some things out on social media.
I think that would be smart.
I'd be glad to do that.
I think it'd be a great idea to do.
We'll do that today.
Out of respect for the taxpayers, they need to know, they need to just let them know.
Thank you all for bringing this to us.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, we're happy, we appreciate you all hearing us through.
Well, hopefully next year we won't have to worry. We'll get everything straightened out, check some balances, and we'll be okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
All right, Mr. Wilson, do we have any items to go into closed session?
Yes, we do. A couple items, real estate, and then prospective industry, Duffield and Weber City.
All right, let me...
And yes, Gate City, real estate.
All right, so do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Danny makes the motion, we'll say Stephanie seconds, everybody vote by way of saying aye. On a motion by Danny Castile duly seconded by Stephanie Addington, board hereby enters into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2 dot 2 dash 3711 for real estate in the Duffield, Gate City, and...
Real estate in Gate City.
Real estate in Gate City, sorry.
Perspective industry in Duffield and Weber City.
I told you she'd skip me. And we've already taken our collective voice vote, and, yeah, all right, so we can...
All right, we'll go back into open session and we'll have to do the certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Scott County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section two dot two dash three seven one two of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Scott County Board of Supervisors that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore being resolved that the Scott County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters that were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Scott County Board of Supervisors. Do I have a motion for that?
Same motion.
Danny makes the motion. Ms. Jeter will second. And a roll call by the clerk, please.
Let's see, District One, Daryl Jeter.
Yes.
District Two, Michelle Glover.
Yes.
District Three, Eddie Skeen.
Yes.
District Four, Michael Ricken.
Yes.
District Five, Danny Castile.
Yes.
District Six, Chris Manus.
Yes.
At Large, Stephanie Addington.
Yes.
All right, we only have one item coming out of closed session. I'm going to make this motion. It's a motion in support of an undisclosed prospect in Duffield and authorize the county administrator and chairman to sign any and all documents related to the project on behalf of the board. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Michelle seconds. Everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, all right, got all that. Sorry, I'm catching up on my paper here. Comments, requests, and recommendations. Has anybody got any comments or?
I have one correction I want to address really quick.
Sure.
Back when Mr. Skeen was speaking about the school systems, you mentioned that it was thirty-two hundred and sixty-eight students, right?
Yes.
Four hundred and fifty-three from Tennessee, correct?
I think that's correct.
That is not thirteen percent. That is seven point. That is seven point two percent. So just for the record, it wasn't a thirteen percent.
Okay.
You mentioned thirteen.
The county wide?
That's what you said.
Okay.
Those were your numbers.
I'll look into it.
It's just seven percent instead of the thirteen as you mentioned.
I've got one thing to say, Chris.
Yes, sir.
This is about what Ms. Parrish talked about. Is the county and the school board supposed to get her report back on all that that she asked about?
I think we'll do our best to answer.
I guess John Ferguson realizes he needs, he'll have to do part of it, won't he?
I'd, yeah, told him we would be leaning on them because a lot of it needs to come to it.
I just wanted to make sure, so.
Yeah, I think, I think a better place to make some of those questions, especially about the school, would probably be at the school board meeting.
Yeah, I think so too, but I just wanted.
Because we have, we have very limited visibility.
Also, she wants to break it down. She can go back to our past meetings when Stephanie made that presentation on.
It was Senator Stephanie's presentation.
Don't do that. But she can go back and watch that because that's exactly how it's, how it's, how it goes.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. We've pretty well covered that before.
Yeah, it was a very good.
Thank you.
Presentation, it really was.
I just wanted to make sure that we.
And that's exactly what John Ferguson explained to me. I mean, how she explained it, that's how he explained it to me also, so it was right on.
Do you have your calculator with you? Do you want to divide four fifty-three to thirty-two sixty-eight?
Why would you divide four fifty-two by three sixty-eight?
That's the Tennessee students, percentage of total students.
Thirty-two, you've got thirty-two hundred total students?
Thirty-two hundred and sixty-eight.
Divide that, divide four hundred and fifty-three into that. That's how you get your seventy percent. That's seven percent.
Thirteen point eight. I got thirteen.
You're getting, you're doing it backwards though. You've got thirty-two hundred students total and you've only got four hundred and fifty of those are.
Fifty, you gotta divide by thirty-two hundred.
No, 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 you're doing it wrong.
Okay.
Thirty-two hundred and eighty-six divided by four fifty-three.
No, that's.
You're doing it backwards.
Yeah, you're doing it backwards.
You're doing it backwards, it's thirteen percent.
Yeah.
Why is it thirteen though? I don't understand that.
You're, the.
If you've got a total of four, what percentage is, there's seven percent of the population in the school system is Tennessee students.
You got your numbers turned back, which is what they're trying to.
Multiply thirty-two sixty-eight with thirteen point eight six percent.
And I'll give you four fifty-three. And I'll give you four fifty-three.
That's right.
All right.
My bad, sorry.
That's all right. Moving on from those comments, I would just like to commend the EDA on recent developments that I'm really happy with how things are going and appreciate them being a partner in moving this county forward together. I really appreciate them. That's the only thing I had to say. Mayo?
I do have a few things. The VDOT, this month I had five requests, one of those have been addressed. A couple of big items, I got a call from a resident in Dougannon regarding the guardrail in the Flatwoods area between Dougannon and Cope. That was on the list last year to be replaced. He said they went, moved to the interstate to do guardrail work. So he's moving it back on my list again to be improved.
That, that's been down for almost two years. Cause I think I mentioned it to Sumter there. I'll say a year and some fifteen months or so.
I got a call from the Yuma area about the road and the mowing on the sites. He also was concerned about the school traffic at Yuma School. And following that, I did contact Mr. Ferguson and discuss that with him. And also Mr. Sumter, since then they've had a meeting and they're going to expand the turn lane in front of that school to eliminate congestion. And that'll be gravel temporary and next summer they're going to do a permanent, about seven pavement, so that, that will be improved. The Lena Wisco VCC Committee, Virginia Caulfield Coalition, they have placed six new cell towers between Tasle and McInnes Counties. One's ready now, two under construction, they previously had twelve towers. I had a discussion with Director Duane Miller about Scott County and he suggested getting our people together, including Mr. Wilson to coordinate and also the Scott County telephone. Have you got any updates on that?
I don't right now. We have had those discussions about trying to set a meeting. Luckily, there's a lot of good things coming to the Lena Wisco area, so there's been a lot of projects and stuff, so trying to coordinate that meeting, you know, we're, we're working on it.
PSA pre-construction meeting for the Hiltons and Newman sewer projects with the project contractors and the PSA engineers has been completed. They got a notice to proceed in the next two weeks and construction will then follow, so probably November construction on those two projects in Yuma.
So where will that be at in Hiltons, where will they start at?
Do you recall Darryl on the layout of the project?
No, I'm not right off.
We can get that for you.
Okay.
Scott County Water, Central Scott Water, they're waiting for these contractors to get their bidding out of the way and freedom out and then they're going to be at that next project in Central Scott, that'll be next bill in Dougannon. The Daniel Leaning Railroad Board, that's still, they're still working with engineers on getting them finished for the sewer project over to the church. We did discuss last meeting about Sheriff Eads and the board request for additional manpower. Mr. Wilson has had that discussion. We invited Mr. Eads, or Mr. Wilson did, to attend our board supervisors meeting, they had some discussion about it. It's based on the amount of geography and the caseload, the twenty-three corridor from Tennessee to Kentucky and the possible drug trafficking. Sheriff Eads has mentioned on numerous occasions that he needs additional officers. Chief Investigator, Mr. Ross said they need ten more investigators to handle current caseload. Sheriff Eads, well, the General Assembly allocates one officer per fifteen-hundred population, so that's what it is now. Plus I think it was mentioned, we are funding one extra person through here. But Sheriff Eads did not want to request any additional manpower at this time. We had invited State Representative, Delegate Kilgore and Senator Pillion to our meeting to discuss the rural road situation going into next year's legislative session and as far as I know, they haven't responded, is that correct?
I have no idea.
Okay. I did get a, we, last meeting had a, authorized a thousand dollar for the Mills of Love in Nicholsville. I did get a thank you card, so they wanted to thank everybody for that. Attended a Nicholsville senior citizen meeting, President Larry Bickers announced that he would no longer be managing Keith Park effective January one. The county will be taking over day to day at that point. Thank you, senior citizens, for all the years of service. And Larry told me right now they have twenty-nine bookings through the remainder of twenty-five and seven in two thousand twenty-six. Heritage Table in Nicholsville is now open for business, doing very well, I understand. Bush Mill Days is, is weekend, October fourth in Nicholsville. At Bush Mill, one hundred and twenty-nine years, it leaves from ten to four p.m. That's all I have.
Oh, and, sorry, during the meeting, Mr. Alan Sumter emailed me and said that the Horton Summit Road project is scheduled to start on October twentieth. The funding is in place and it's not going away, so. Just wanted to make everybody aware of that one. That was something I meant to ask about last meeting, but I was unable to make it.
I will follow up with gentlemen.
Thanks, Adam, for the quick response. Yeah, and I'll, I'll email them as well.
Well, by the way, I think you mentioned they do watch.
They do watch, yes.
So that's, I was mentioning, that's the same last time I wanted to inform him, he said, well, I already know about it.
Yeah, of course.
I will put a plug in, I know you did earlier, but as far as reporting, you know, on the website, they do get to that.
They do.
So, yeah, it's a great tool to have and, you know, make sure that everybody knows about it, we can utilize that.
Putting a work order in?
Yeah, they, they, they watch that and get right on it.
All right, anybody else got any comments, concerns, questions? I want to make sure I look at everybody. All right. All right, we will adjourn meeting till November the fifth at nine a.m. Thank you, everyone.